That's my son, my grandpa.
Evening ladies and gentlemen. Before we start our meeting tonight, we've got some exciting things we're going to do. Number one, we're going to stand and we're going to do the pledge and we're going to have our invocation. And then I have a high honor that we're going to do it. It's going to be a surprise to you in just a minute. So with that, I'd like for us to stand and I think the call is for John Baker to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the right of the Constitution, the Constitution of the United States of America.
You'll remain standing, please, Reverend Eric. I took your podium away. You can just stand there.
Well, it's fine. That's not a problem. Bell with me, please. And Father, we thank you and we invite you in your presence into this meeting tonight that it will bring glory to you and the good to your people. Thank you for all who serve here. Thank you for their families who sacrifice while they're here. We thank you for the good that will come from their services, Reverend. We just give you praise in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
You may be seated. Again, before I start, for me, I'm going to turn the gavel over to the council president. Mr. President, with your permission, I'd like to conduct this ceremony.
All right, Jonah, go ahead, please.
I'd like to have Miss Bolander come forward. Jonah, come up with her. Her husband?
Yes. That way I get the baby.
Through the years, as mayor, I've got to do a lot of things. I've married several people in this room and at the park and at the railroad station. But this is the first time I ever got to crown a beautiful woman. And I want to explain to you why we're doing this. In Indiana, they don't have a Mrs. Indiana contest. So young ladies that are Mrs. can apply and send their resume into a committee and the committee selects the Mrs. Indiana candidate, which has been done, and it's Sarah Bolander. And I've known her since she was a little girl and her husband longer than that and her mom and dad longer than that. A great representative for Fayette County, Connersville, and especially the state of Indiana. So before we start, Eric, I'd like you to pray. I don't believe any ceremony or anything should ever take place without first a broken prayer. So stand and everybody stand with us.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity and what an honor it is for Sarah to represent the state of Indiana and our community here at Connersville. May you bless her and keep her. May you shine your face upon her and be gracious unto her. May you lift up your countenance and give her your peace in the travels that she will do and the ceremonies that she will attend, the contests. Thank you, God. Give her the favor in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
You may be seated. Mr. President, if you would read her resume, please.
All right, sir. Sarah is a daughter of Randy and Flossie Holbrook and daughter-in-law to John and Joyce Bolander. She has been happily married to her husband Jacob for eight years and together they currently reside on the family farm, raising their two children Wyatt Four and Eden Eleven Months. As a 2002 graduate of Connersville High School, Sarah was a former four-year Lady Spartan basketball player, two-year track athlete, homecoming princes in 2000, homecoming court in 2001, prom court in 2002, member of the Spirit Club, and honorable mention for Female Athlete of the Year in 2002. She was also a contestant in the Fayette County Free Fair Queen Contest in 2002 and 2003. After high school, Sarah attended Alice Lloyd College and became a member of the Lady Eagles Basketball Team as a walk-on athlete. Unable to finish out her basketball career with knee injuries, she decided to help and give back to her Connersville community by being a four-year coach and mentor to the Spartan Heat Girls Youth Basketball Team. Aside from being a farmer's wife, Sarah is currently president of the Glenwood Volunteer Fire Department Ladies Auxiliary. She has been an auxiliary member for the past nine years and in that time, she has been president and captain of the Glenwood Ladies Auxiliary Waterball Team for the past six years. As a dedicated auxiliary member, she has participated as a victim in various fire and EMT training exercises, provided drinking water and supplies on fire scenes to any and all firefighters, helped with fundraising events, and many other volunteer tasks that have been asked of her. As Mrs. Indiana United States 2015, Sarah will be representing the great state of Indiana and all married women across the state in Mrs. United States Pageant July 19th to 24th at the South Point Casino and Hotel in Las Vegas, Nevada. Along with 51 other married women from across the United States, she will be judged on swimwear, panel judge interview, and evening gown for the title of Mrs. United States 2015. July 24th will be the final night of competition and crowning. Time of the event is pending till further notice.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Clerk Treasure, if you'd come around, I've got a job for you. We have lovely ladies on our council.
We are. I've never done that before.
And I didn't want to put a paper on, so I thought I'd do. I want you to have the honor, number one, to put her, what do you call this?
Sash.
Or sash. And I thought it'd be better if a lady put that on.
You think so? She'd probably prefer that. Is it fastened somehow? Oh, let's see. Congratulations.
Now, as mayor of the city of Connersville, it is my honor to place this beautiful crown on Mrs. Indiana 2015 and we wish her the best of luck in Las Vegas and everybody in this room is invited to go out and watch the contest. Sarah, what I want you to do, I want you to introduce your family and then you go ahead and give your speech. I'll take my place back up here with the council. Bless you. Don't forget your husband. He's a firefighter and he works part-time for the Connersville Fire Department.
As mayor said, this is my husband, who has to put up with me every day of his life. So I want to start by my mom, Flossie Holbrook. My daughter Eden. My father Randy Holbrook. And my brother Matt. My mother-in-law Joyce Bolander. My nephews John and Trent Bolander. My father-in-law John Bolander. My nephew Blaine Bolander. My son Wyatt. And my sister-in-law Nancy. And my fire family from Glenwood Volunteer Fire Department. I promise I'll keep it short. I just want to say to all the amazing people whose support is the reason why I'm standing here tonight, I would like to start by saying thank you from the bottom of my heart to the people who have touched my life in one way or another and developed me into who I am. My parents Randy and Flossie Holbrook, my brother Matt, my husband Jacob, my two wonderful children, father-in-law and mother-in-law John and Joyce Bolander, brother and sister-in-laws, nephews, cousins, aunts, uncles, grandparents, and friends here in Florida. Mayor Urban for doing the greatest honor in crowning me tonight. Thank you. My Glenwood Volunteer Fire Department family and auxiliary and any and all emergency personnel and law enforcement. Thank you. A special thank you to my stylist Kim Granger and her crew and what they had to work with. My photographer Katie Adams for helping me make it this far. Thank you. Indiana currently does not have a pageant to select their state representative, so I had to submit my application and photos of myself to the pageant headquarters in New York. After a month of deliberation, I received the news that I was chosen by the Mrs. United States Pageant Selection Committee to represent the great state of Indiana. My work is just beginning. Unlike majority of the other states who hold their own state pageant and provide funds and award-winning packages to their winner, I must work very hard and find sponsors throughout our great state to help me in my once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and journey to Las Vegas. From my pageant wardrobe to advertisement, hair, makeup, shoes, workouts, and coaching, I know I'm not perceived as your typical beauty queen and although I have never been on my first flight on an airplane, I feel one of the biggest challenges I will be faced with is giving up my farm boots for high heels. With that being said, I have to say thank you to our law enforcement for not writing tickets for reckless walking in high heels. Thank you. As your Mrs. Indiana United States, I promise to do my very best to represent the city of Connersville, Fayette County, and the entire state of Indiana to the best of my ability. I hope your small-town farm girl will make you all very proud. Thank you.
City council, I would like for you to go down and shake her hand. If you will, just start that way if you can. You guys will go that way.
Okay.
Julie and I have already been down there and got a hug.
It's very honored to have someone like you to represent us. I know you do it. You do it well. Thank you. You go real hard at what is behind me. Okay? Congratulations. Good luck.
It's too much for the Mrs. Congratulations, Senator.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Keep your head up.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I thank all of the council and I thank all of you folks for coming tonight. If you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, it's kind of like watching mud dry. But you know, it's not good outside, so you're welcome to stay or leave, whichever you'd like. We appreciate you coming and Sarah will be behind you. And if there's anything we can do to help you, we're here to help you. I'm sure I'll be hearing from you. And to your husband, I've been sitting here thinking, I wonder how I would feel if my wife was doing all this. He's got to have a lot of mixed feelings. But you have a beautiful wife and mother and all you need to do is just be proud of her.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone that came out tonight. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Dave, if you'll put the podium back over here for me. Council president still has the gavel and he's in charge tonight. He's going to elect his officers. This is the first meeting, so if you'll call the meeting to order, sir.
All right, sir. Regular meeting of the City Council of Connersville, Indiana is now in session. Please silence your cell phones. Thank you. Welcome to everybody watching us on TV and the folks that are here in the council chambers. We have had our crowning of Sarah, so we'll go to the reading of the minutes of December 15th, 2014, regular meeting. Any additions or corrections?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Out of the next motion, we accept them as presented.
Sir, a second.
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes as presented for December 15th? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? We'll move on to roll call, please.
Councilwoman Rish.
Present.
Councilman Weber. Councilman Shomel.
Present.
Councilman Nobby.
Present.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Present.
Councilman Creach.
Present.
Councilwoman Seiler.
Present.
We have council appointments for the year 2015 to make tonight. We will begin with the city council president. Are there any nominations for city council president?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to nominate the most senior member of our city council, Mr. Fran Shomel.
Any other nominations for president? If not, is there a motion to close the nominations for president?
Second.
All in favor of me being council president for 2015? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I think. City council vice president, nominations open for vice president?
Mr. Shomel.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Mr. Gabe Nobby as vice president.
All right, Councilman Nobby. Any other nominations? Someone move that the nominations be closed for vice president?
Close the nominations.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of having Gabe Nobby as our city council vice president for this year, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Gabe, you're it.
All right. Make sure you're here, Frank.
E-911 Advisory Board, a one-year term. Mrs. Stevens, former council member, served in 2014. Is there a nomination for the E-911 Advisory Board?
An nominee.
Debbie, would you like to serve there? Ruby, would you like to serve there?
Connie wants to.
I think Connie would.
Ruby?
A nominee.
Debbie, okay. Any other nominations for the advisory board for 911? If not, is there a motion to close the nominations?
Go move.
Second.
All those in favor of having Debbie as our?
Connie.
Oh, Connie?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought it was, where have I been? Okay. Okay, Connie, you're it, I guess. All those in favor of having Connie as our advisory board member? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Okay, Connie. Okay, Debbie, we come to you.
Now we're here.
County Economic Development Board Member for one year. Are you willing to serve again?
Yes.
Okay. Any other nominations for the Economic Development Board?
Nomination to be closed.
All right. Thank you, Tom. All those in favor of having Debbie Montgomery representing the council on the county's Economic Development Board for one year? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Okay. The Fayette County First Aid Unit Review Committee, a one-year appointment. I have served on that. Is there anyone else that would like to replace me on the First Aid Unit Review Committee?
I'll do it if you don't want to do it.
Okay, that'd be great, Connie. Okay, if you can handle both those things.
Sure.
All those in favor of having Connie represent us on the Fayette County First Aid Unit Review Committee? Say aye.
Aye.
Any other nominations? Apparently not, so Connie, you're it. The Tax Abatement Committee, city council president by virtue of the office, serves on that for the year. The Redevelopment Commission, one-year terms. We have two appointments. Currently, it's Colina Frame and Jeff Reedman. Your honor, do you know if they're willing to continue on?
Yes, they're willing if you want.
All right. What's the council's pleasure on Colina Frame and Jeff Reedman representing us on the Redevelopment Commission for one year?
Some move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those folks will serve there. Urban Enterprise Association, one-year terms. We have Marilyn Kinzer with a question mark. I'm not sure what this is.
She hasn't responded back yet.
Okay. David Jobe.
The others have.
David Counselor. And we had Needham City Council Representative. Ruby?
What is it?
It's the Urban Enterprise Association.
See, I don't know quite a consistent.
You don't know what that means?
I was gonna say, I don't know.
Remind us about where. Does everybody know what it means? I don't know.
Yeah. I don't think you have to live in the zone because David Jobe doesn't live in the zone.
You only need one person for that?
I can remember.
I don't think you do because I was on that one time.
Yeah, it's a council rep.
Just, it's a council rep.
Ruby, they meet around 10 o'clock in the morning and they have a budget of around $80,000 and it's a zone that is the center of town and they distribute money for different things. The painting downtown was done through that.
Develop properties.
They do things, they meet once a month.
No, I can't argue that.
You can't do that? You will, Debbie? Meet once a month, don't you?
Yeah.
Do you live in the zone?
Yeah. Yes, I do.
I probably do, too, don't I?
I think you do.
Yeah, I think you will, though. So we approve just these three, your honor, with Marilyn undecided or?
Yeah. And then you've got to vote on her.
Okay, we have David Jobe and David and Debbie willing to serve on the Urban Enterprise Association. Any other nominations?
Nomination to be closed.
Second.
Okay, let's vote on these. All in favor of having David Jobe, David Counselor, and Debbie Montgomery representing the city on the Urban Enterprise Association? Say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Okay, that should complete the appointment, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
As far as the council is concerned, I believe you have appointments now, is that right?
Mm-hmm. And mine are over in my office. David, would you go over in my office? They're in the blue folder on the table. I thought Melissa put them in here and she left them in my.
Hold on a sec.
We won't hold the meeting up, though. We'll straight it forward. Okay. We have Resolution 2015-01, place an EMS. This is reimbursement on telephone again. You know, police spend an EMS, upgrade their phones and they pay the difference. This is reimbursement. What's your privilege?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept Resolution 2015-01.
Second.
A motion and a second that we accept Resolution 2015-01. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. I have an ordinance that I got prepared here. It's, I've been discussing this with the airport board chairman a couple of times since I've been mayor. I mean, it happens once or twice here. We don't get a forum, but there's only four on the airport board. So I first checked with the FAA and the state of Indiana sent me back all the rules and regulations about that. Then we had to go through the state because they control who serves on the airport board. Then Mr. Baker got into it and so we have a memo that came from IAC telling us how we do it. We have to pass an ordinance by you giving me permission to put the fifth person on the airport board. The only thing I don't know is I suppose that person will serve four years and then will be appointed.
Yes, that's under codes.
Okay. So Mr., thank you, sir. Mr. Worley is here. He endorses this idea to add this person to it. Go ahead, Gene.
The mayor and I discussed this at length last week and after the mayor and I had a discussion, I contacted the other board members and I got a response from two of the three who were both highly in favor of it, as I am. The fifth member would give us an opportunity to have a meeting every month. When we don't have a meeting because of somebody's out of town or somebody's ill, we got two members, we can't have a meeting. So then, we've already made arrangements. We've got everybody here. We've got our consultants here. We've had, we've made arrangements in our day and then we can't have a meeting. So then we have to go back, contact the news media for 48 hours and then try to get everybody organized and back in to have another meeting. If we can't have a meeting at the end of the month, a lot of times our bills go unpaid and that doesn't look good for us anybody else. We want to keep our bills up and we approve all those payments at our last meeting of the month. So this is a good idea. I've talked with Mr. Baker. I went over these codes and it does require an ordinance and once that ordinance is completed, then we can, the mayor will appoint the fifth member. Questions?
Go ahead, if you have any question.
People need five members, I think. I don't think an even number is good because of a tie.
Well, we don't do that. We don't do politics. In any event of a tie, the mayor would break that tie. But we don't, we have never had a tie that I can recall. Usually?
Not in my living.
Not in my 30 years do I ever remember a tie. We just simply, we're not party members. We're board members that do the best we can for the city of Connersville and the county of Fayette. We're not, we don't work for Fayette County, but we try to do everything for everybody. And so we don't do politics. It's just not, not even talked about. But this would help. This fifth member would ensure that there's a lot of preparation goes into having a meeting. We have to make sure that the mayor's quarters is open for us. I have a lot to do. Julie has the schedules to make out. Our consultant has schedules and discussions to make out. We have contractors there a lot of times and other folks. We don't have a meeting. It really upsets the apple cart for a lot of people. But this, this will give us a real good chance to have a meeting every time. We'll have three members out of five and we got a four.
Gene, who's currently on your board?
1984, January.
Who is currently? Who, who's on your board now?
Pete Bell, Tim Patterson, and Bob Stann.
Oh, now presently, yes.
Bob Stann.
Pete Bell, Tim Patterson, Bob Stann. I thought you meant back then.
When I was investigating all this, I found out that the board has to be made up of two Republicans and two Democrats and then the third person can be the same politics I am because I'm appointing it. Now, if we have a Democrat mayor, the next time that the next appointment comes along, then he would, or he or she, I've got to remember, would appoint a Democrat. But it's the party that's in power appoints the fifth person.
And that's based on how you voted in a primary because you don't register as one party or another in Indiana because however you voted in the last primary determines your politics.
I have no appointment for you tonight on the airport board because Melinda has gone to someplace. I don't know where she is.
Where?
She went to England.
England. And she has the voting records locked up and the girls couldn't get to it. And it has to be the last primary election that that individual voted in. That's what they claim you are. So I never knew that. That's new to me, but that's the way it is.
A lot of boards do politics. A lot of boards have troubles, unlike ours. They fuss and fume and fight. We don't do that.
See, they try, they try to keep it even.
We're never going to.
With that, I have pending ordinance that John Baker's prepared, 3174. He's prepared according to the Federal Aviation Code and the state codes as he's got down here and I would like you to consider that on first reading tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I move to accept pending ordinance 3174.
Second.
A motion and a second to consider pending ordinance 3174, adding a fifth member to the aviation board. Any discussion? None appearing. We'll have a roll call, though.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Yes.
Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and pending? Go move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules so we consider pending ordinance 3174 on third and final reading. On suspension of rules only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Since none are opposed, you can move forward if you'd like.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second that we consider pending ordinance 3174, an ordinance that would allow five members on the aviation board. Any discussion? Did we have a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any, any discussion? An appearing of roll call, though.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Siler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Yeah, pass that on. Third and final reading, I thank you, and we have looked at three candidates. We'll have a candidate at the next meeting, I hope, that is interested in the airport board. Okay, Board of Public Works in Safety, Jean Oakley. Fran Shomel. Ronnie Coldiron and Mike Bishop, and Fran Shomel will serve as the vice chairman of that board. The mayor serves as chairman. And these are the mayor appointments, I should tell you. Annexation Committee is a one-year term. Fran Shomel, Gary Weber, and Tom Creach will be on there. Fran Shomel, Joe Milwaukee, the mayor's honor by virtue of the office, Melissa Callahan, and I just, I've been looking for another appointment, and what's the young man's name? That's our IT man, Mike?
Michael King.
Michael King, has agreed to serve. If there's somebody else that you know would like to serve on that board, it's a very important board, that's John's board, I'm still looking for one appointment on there. Community Corrections, it's the mayor by virtue of the office, and when I can't go, I appoint the chief of police. Community Development, it's the mayor by virtue of the office. Connersville Redevelopment Commission, I appoint... My appointments are Joe Milwaukee, Carol Hunter, and Dick O'Neil. Emergency 911 Advisory Board is Fran Shomel. Fayette County Alcoholic Beverage Board is George Morris, and he also serves as chairman of that board. Fayette County Economic Development, the mayor serves on that by virtue of the office. The Finance Committee, all appointed by the mayor. The mayor serves as chairman of Rand, Julie Greason, and Gabe Nobby. If there's anybody else, we don't have to have just four on there. We can have five on there if one of you would like to serve on the Finance Committee. It's the committee that reviews the budget before we present it to the council. So if you have any thoughts on that, I'd be glad to add you to this. There's no state law that tells you how many we can have on there. Okay, the Tax Abatement Committee is the mayor, Julie Greason, Diana Wright, and the president of city council, which is, in this case, Rand. The Tourism Committee, I have three appointments, the county has two. Deana Barrett, Donna Schroder, and Kelly Robinson will be my appointments, and those are staggered appointments. And Historic Preservation Committee is Jim Orr, Donna Scott, Donna Schroder, Katrina Bailey, Rick Lemon, Rebecca St. Clair, Sharon McQueen, Patricia Sumen, and John Bolander, who's right with us tonight. John serves a great job down there. He's interested in our county and our... I appreciate you serving on there. The Urban Enterprise Zone, which they just elected you to serve on, Ruby. Also, I have appointments on there is Jim Barrett, Jeff Reedman, Dick O'Neil, Wade Winkler, Gerald Holmes, and Jason Morris. It's a big board. They have a lot of important business. That's the mayor's appointments, and we will have... We'll do the airport board at the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We had... Fran, we had forgot to... I forgot to bring it up during the council appointments. Connie was on the Solid Waste District Board. We have to have one council person, and Connie said she would serve again. Do we need to...
Okay, I will.
Is that all right?
I'm serving on that.
Unless someone else wanted it.
It's the... What was the board?
Fayette County Solid Waste District.
Okay, Solid Waste Board.
And the mayor's on there for me.
The mayor's on there also?
Yeah, the mayor's on there.
By virtue of the office.
Oh, okay. All those in favor of having Connie represent us on the Fayette County Solid Waste Board, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed?
Thank you, Fran.
Okay, Connie, you're it.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, let's go back to our agenda here. Going to old business. Anybody got any old business? That'd be from last year, a week ago. None appearing? Miscellaneous business? None? First Treasurers Report? You got it in your hands. Public Forum? Is there anybody out there that would like to say anything at all? Neil Munson? Gene, you already spoke. Anybody? Chief? Things are relatively quiet. I haven't heard of any heroin overdoses, and things are better.
Had one last week.
Don't tell him. No news is good news.
Don't ask.
Okay. Ruby, you have anything you want to bring up tonight?
Nope. Everybody have a happy new year. It's too late.
Mr. Creach?
I did want to ask Mr. Munson, how's our new ambulance doing?
It's got a couple issues, but other than that, my very minor stuff over here this week's taken care of.
Great.
The other half, we're doing good.
Great, thank you. It's all I got in there.
Connie? Look, Connie. Debbie, I look around at you, why are you calling?
I don't have anything.
Hey, glad you're back with us?
I'm good.
Yeah, okay. Connie, now I got the right Connie.
No.
Mr. President?
I asked the chief today at the Board of Works meeting about the tasers, and he said they are on order, so I wanted you to advise him.
I stand corrected. Half of them came in, and the other half, they were still underway. One with the batteries.
So you're gonna wait till they all come in?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't, it has them out that bad.
Okay. That's the update on the tasers, guys.
Our next meeting will be... I can't ever see that calendar.
The 20th.
20. Can you see that?
Sure.
The next meeting will be the 20th or 7th.
Of course we can.
I appreciate all of you coming down tonight, and... Oh, that's right, it'll be on Tuesday, because Martin Luther King Day is on Monday, and so it's on Tuesday. I know, Fran, that upsets you, because you got a ballgame.
Certainly does.
In the other ballgame?
Yes.
That night?
Newcastle is in Connersville on Tuesday, the 20th of January.
And you're torn, because you broadcast the ballgame.
That's right.
And you're president of the council. What are you gonna do? You know, we do have a vice president.
Fran, you seem to be here.
Dr. Reagan here?
I said Fran seemed to be here.
He does such a great job. Didn't he do a good job reading tonight? He's got that radio voice, he can just do it. And I don't know how we're gonna get through that ballgame. Who's gonna do it?
I don't think I...
John, what do you think?
We can't do it without Fran.
I make a motion we allow him to be missing that night and let him do his ballgame. All in favor?
We have to check with our crew here. We have to check with the TV crew to see if there's adequate people or not, because there will be a guy here.
Am I excused as well?
No. You always are. All right. It's been a great meeting for the first year. If the whole year goes like this, I'll be a happy camper, and thank you all for coming. I'll take a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
I didn't even say what for.
We didn't have to say them.
To adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.